Cold Spring Planning Board. Roll call. Remember, sorry. Here. Remember, Clemenson? Here. Remember, Rose?
Yeah.
And we have the village turning hand down. We're not going to do minutes tonight. We're going to try and burn through this. I gave the village clerk a bunch of sets of minutes. We're getting caught up from when we were out without a village, without a board secretary for quite a while, so we're catching up on that. Reports of members. Does anyone have anything to report?
No.
Correspondence. John, I got Mary. Something was dropped off to the office today as correspondence to the board that it's unsigned. Does it?
Comments on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess you-
What do you do with unsigned stuff?
I mean, you could make it part of the record if you want.
Of course, I'm keeping it sitting on there. The norm should print it, but it's not in my box.
You don't have to read it. It's the record. I mean, public care is closed anyway, but-
Okay.
It certainly included.
Okay, of course. And people typically write these things because they don't know what they've done. The last one I didn't read in, the writer was unhappy. So I thought I'm writing it because I don't have to comment.
Right, but it's still part of the record even if you don't read it.
Right.
I think the key is that we get to read it.
Yeah. Let's just read it in. It's not that long. The only correspondence we had is actually unsigned, but it came in, it was hand-delivered at some point to the village clerk. Mary sent it to me today. Dear Mayor Miranda and members of the village planning board, parking in Cold Spring is an issue and the Butterfield redevelopment project as planned will make the parking situation significantly worse. Please consider the following. One of the basic assumptions used in the calculation of parking requirements at the Butterfield redevelopment site is that various parking spaces will be used by residents in the evening and by businesses or senior centers during the day, rather. Even with assumption, with this assumption, recent calculations suggest that there are likely days and times of insufficient parking. The parking problem is made worse when you recognize that the proposed residents are over 55 and you recognize as a group over 55 are frequently retirees. I hope I get to retire at 55.
Yeah, right.
And generally home during the day. Only one needs to be, only one needs to visit any over 55 facility to see that over 55 residents tend to be home during the day. Planning board must consider peak usage. The other living parking requirements created when a popular event at the senior center coincides with other activities. Events at the senior center are expected to occur during the week, Monday through Friday, between 10 to 4:00. The medical building is expected to be busy during the week, Monday through Friday, 10 to 4:00. The office areas and commercial areas are expected to be busy during the week, Monday to Friday, between 10 to 4:00. The over 55 Butterfield residents will walk to the event at the senior center leaving their cars in much-needed parking spaces. In short, the site is substantially short of the parking, of the parking requirements during peak requirements. Failure to adequately recognize the parking requirements during peak usage will negatively impact the already strained parking issues in Cold Spring. Parking issues will be compounded when Butterfield residents recognize that if they go out during the day, they may have trouble finding a new parking spot when they return. Residents will modify their plans and not move their cars when the parking may be an issue. The community must do a thorough and considered review of the situation. They must carefully consider the parking requirements, especially during peak usage time. A miscalculation may have been made in the past. Blaming a known error on a past group is not justification to leave it uncorrected once identified. Please do what is right for the entire Cold Spring community. Future generations will thank you. It's just, it's just, it's just a sign thank you. So I'll send a copy to the applicant as well. So that's the only correspondence that came in. Unfinished business is the matter at hand, which is Butterfield. We had, the plan was to have everything a week in advance. Unfortunately, we got, we got the neg deck and the resolutions two hours ago. We got the, the parking plan this morning. So we're going to have to sit here and actually do some work to kind of do a takeoff of the parking space just to keep things moving. We had hoped to do this offline independently, but we'll have to do it really quick here. It shouldn't really take that long, but it takes as long as it takes. Okay. This is the parking table for, that was worked, it was originally, my work was passed on to John. John confirmed it today?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Dave had a similar table that the numbers matched. So to, the code, well, code required is problematic for me because of the 35, Lahey. 35 is approved for the medical use and that's carrying forward. But let's just kind of set that aside for the minute. The code required spaces on the site would be 257. What we agreed to at the last meeting was go as, absolutely as far as the code would allow us to go, which is a full 20% waiver. We did that with, in consideration of many things, but probably the biggest thing was the busing, that the county would provide busing. It isn't so much that that will entirely solve the problem, but the hope is that obviously that reduces the parking load on the site. It also then, in many ways, I think, kind of self-corrects because I think if the seniors are driving and don't find parking, the hope is that then the next time they call the bus. And it is likely that that will be the case because the reduction will take it down from 257, and 257 isn't really what you would calculate for code required. There'd be probably another 10 spaces or so with the medical use, but the medical use carried over the existing approved 35. So you're roughly, you know, 260-something. This, this site plan that we have in front of us represents 213 conforming spaces. That just came over this morning. Luckily, the magic number that I calculate for a full 20% waiver is 213 spaces. So this plan has just enough to meet the requirement. So what we need to do now is compare, the drawing is still labeled in the title block mod 3. I think we want to, you're calling it mod 4? Or you want to just mod 3 with a revision date? So what we're looking at is mod 3, but not the mod 3 that came in on the 14th. It's mod 3 that's dated 6/22 yesterday. So that's the drawing that we're all working from. That's the drawing we'll have in front of us. We've cleared a way to rest, but we'll need to go back with some comparisons. So the board, let's just, just first do some internal discussion about the counts. So on the takeoffs, are people in agreement that they come up with 213 conforming spaces? Now, there are two, there are two things that, space number 190 is not clear to me that it's conforming. I did not count 190. So if it isn't conforming, we still are under the, we still are at, under the 20% waiver. So it's not, it's not a deal breaker, but it's important to define whether or not it's conforming.
Can we, can we talk to the applicant and get the non-conforming spaces before we go further?
Yeah, you want to just mark them all up?
Yeah.
Okay. So what we need to do is, because part of the problem with the old plan is that the approvals were not clear. This, you know, the second opinion attorney said there was a very poor job done on a lot of the way the approvals were documented. It creates problems going forward, so obviously we'd like to make sure that the document survives on its own, and if all of us are not here tomorrow, the document's very clear. So what Judith had asked, remember Rose had asked, is to get the conforming part, the non-conforming parking spaces clearly marked on the site plan that you file. Paul, do you want us, do you want to walk us through that, or?
Which ones are non-conforming?
All right. So in the buildings four and five, the actual link. Okay, there's 170, 171, 172, 173, 174.
Okay.
And then-
And these are, and those are the five non-conforming and restricted to compact, right?
Yes.
171, 2, 3, and-
No, 1, yeah, 171.
170, 3, 174.
Okay, what about 141?
What about it?
It looks very skinny on the plan.
Well, that's just because there's another line drew. I mean-
You think it's a draft?
So you think it's just a draw?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, can you, so let's clean that up.
Okay.
Just on the draw, well, obviously what we're going to try to get at is just some notes to show new drawing. We'll do a resolution of space that's conditional on all these changes, but just so, we don't want to approve a spot that doesn't look conforming.
And is 175 a parking spot or the trash compact?
175 is going to be a parking spot.
Non-conforming.
Non-conforming or conforming?
That looks conforming.
It's conforming.
It is conforming. Okay.
Okay.
And then with the other non-conformings, are those 16 spaces between buildings four and five and three?
Yes.
So the question is 190.
I think it's 190, 189, and what about 179?
179?
I'm not sure, Dave.
179 is already non-conforming. That's one of the 16.
That's all right. Okay, right.
So there's 16, 5, 2.
On the approved plans, they note 21 non-conforming.
Right.
And that fits the-
So we still add those to them.
So, so my question is still on 190. So if you look at the, the approved site plan, the way the, the way the parking was done was the contiguous runs of parking had a label. So this has this label here for this run that, you know, that includes 190, is counted as 46 even though it's 47. So it says 46 spaces, but it's 47. Arnie is our only surviving member.
So it sounds like it wasn't ever counted as a conforming.
Was never counted as conforming.
So, I mean, you can just add it to the non-conforming.
Although I don't agree with this table either, so I don't know what was, the table, I don't get the same takeoff that the table gets anyway, so I don't know. But it seemed very clear that the intent was to label the spaces, right, that are, you know, conforming or non-conforming. And it's not counted. So it, it seems, it seems to me that if you have a car parked here, right, I don't understand how this car relates to that car. Does that, that doesn't look right to you, does it?
Well, what is, the code says has to be how many feet wide and how many feet long?
Well, no, the spaces-
No, this is about the angle.
The question is more of this. So if this, if this parking space is occupied, right? And if the car is out here and this parking is occupied and the car is, and the car goes this way, it, it looks like there's not enough room. And I'm wondering if that's why it wasn't originally counted. Without counting it, we're still at 213, but the applicant's still at 213 and makes the 20% waiver.
So do you want to make it like compact parking only?
It seems safer to me for this to be called a compact space. What do you think?
I'd agree.
Yes?
I mean, leave it as a space.
As long as he still has his 213 and we're not-
It does. I didn't count this one.
Okay.
Because it wasn't counted in the original site plan.
Well, I have 49 totally on this side, including those two.
Right, and I counted that round at 48.
Okay.
On a takeoff, because I don't, I think that may be why. And again, all the more reason, to your point, have it identified on the site plan to show what's, what's non-conforming and what's conforming. So we're going to call 190 non-conforming.
Okay, so now we're up to 22.
Right. So in my takeoff, I go up one and down one, so it's a wall. So what other questions do we have which respect to the takeoffs, the counts of the parking that's provided?
The counts?
The counts and/or the location. I know that Judith, you had a comment, which I-
I just wasn't entirely clear what on the old site plan, the grayed-out spaces were-
So on mod, on mod 2, there was the original referral that came over that was very vague, right? That came over from the building inspector saying, I'm not sure, it didn't really say much of anything. It basically said various modifications, assorted modifications to portions of the lady pavilion, where we'd normally get a change-of-use referral, right? But in that packet was the existing parking, which is, was called existing, and then the first mod 2. The intention of the shading on the mod 2-
Yeah.
-was to show us what was changing.
Okay, so that was not something I needed to-
That's before there was any agreement, although we still don't agree, we agree to disagree, that this is a change-of-use, right? We are very clear in our, in our jurisdiction and in our feeling, especially with the two, with the two opinions that are fully aligned, legal opinions.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a change in the parking space.
It's a good way to do it, because you can either bubble it, which then you're going to have bubbles all over the place, or shade it, so.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what the shading was for. And the other thing was, Judith, you had a question about 234 and 235, as far as their relation to the state road?
Yeah, I didn't know if there was any issue there about, you know, one is the same distance, so I just wanted to make sure that there was no variance needed for setback.
Oh, okay. Yeah. This is not printed to scale, unfortunately. This is on, but we can still get this. Where's the bar line? Jesus.
And I say that saying that I really don't know what the setback is for parking space off the state road.
That's, I assume that's a building code?
Yes.
From line to issue, right? So the building inspector replied it?
Yep.
Because obviously the site plan, it would be my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, so follow me on this, John, is that if we, if we were to approve a site plan where it conflicts with something as far as the DOT or the state, the building inspector is supposed to catch that and is supposed to correct it on site, the applicant would still have to deliver the same number of parking spaces. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we're, I think we're okay there.
Okay.
What else you got?
That was my list.
No, I have none.
Okay, so we'll, we're going to need notes, obviously. You have a list of, so I think we're going to need notes on the drawing to show that these are compact, or some sort of, some sort of indication that they're compact spaces. Are the parallels, oh, are the parallels compact or no? They're just, they're just non-conforming. Okay.
That's beyond buildings three, four, and five. This is only within that or compact being noted elsewhere as well?
There's space number 190.
Okay.
Just that there could be whatever kind of signage you, you know, I imagine it'd be vertical signage. I think a retaining wall is there in front of it. What else do we want?
Well, we wanted to have the signage marked.
Right, so then there's the, there's the reserve spaces. Now, the reserve spaces, I don't remember, I, I, it's 11, right?
Correct.
11, because we can't reserve a handicap space. It's essentially reserved anyway. So we need a note on the site just to show that spaces 16, 17, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30 are marked, you know, reserved, reserved for the, you know, whatever, whatever you're putting, whether it's your Presbyterian or, or if you don't want to go tenant-specific, if you're just going to reserve for medically, you know.
Yeah, I thought that's what was, we said, was said last time, is to reserve it for medical use.
Yeah, yeah, if you don't want to be tenant-specific, that's fine.
And I had it noted, that's the 11 spaces in front of the medical offices, so I guess you've just listed the numbers, right?
Yeah.
Okay, can you just give me that list again, so we got it right?
It's 16 through 30, minus 18, 19, and 20.
And 21.
Oh, 21, sorry.
21 is handicap.
19, 20.
Minus.
Oh, minus, yeah.
Right, what else you got?
You want a note on the plans regarding, you know, Putnam County will provide round-trip bus service for all participants of the onsite programs provided by the county at the county senior center.
Right, for the full term of the lease. And I know I reached out to the town supervisor just to see if he would coordinate with the county as far as the busing, and he said they were amenable to that. I don't know, did it go to physical services yet, or?
It went to physical services, through the administration. Legislator Albano was the chair of physical services.
Okay, great.
We made the modifications to the lease, and they're being put back down the hall to connect to physical services.
And so it's a, it's a binding clause in the lease?
Yep.
That runs the full term of the lease? Okay, great, excellent. And again, I think, you know, I mean, it's not a magic bullet, but I think for people that question our logic, I mean, what we're trying to do here is first apply, I don't know, in no particular order, apply the code and not get sued. So what we want to do is really kind of make this work, because we understand, we understand a lot of time has passed, right? The, the prior board has, has put these approvals forward. The developer, you know, relies, with good reason, on the, on the, those approvals, right, and then proceeds. And then it comes with some risk when you start to reopen them. So we, we obviously took that very seriously, made sure we were, you know, doing things correctly. And so I think the busing was really kind of the tipping point for us. I know, I think Arnie expressed it well, and he said you can't beat that. Because I think even though it may not work on day one, I think it will self-correct because I think if the seniors come over for the programs and ultimately can't find parking, I would think they're going to call for the bus, and hopefully the county can keep up with that, but ultimately it kind of is what it is. So I think that's the best we can do.
I agree.
Given the, you know, given the parameters that we're working in. And then when you add the, you know, the non-conforming spots back in, which luckily there's lots of smaller cars, there's, you know, maybe at some point there'll be charging stations, maybe little smaller cars, you know, so we do have very large spaces. Unfortunately, that's what our code has, it doesn't offer anything else, so we can't, we can't count those spaces, but there are another 21 spaces. So you're at, you know, 30, you know, you're at 234, 235, rather.
22 non-conforming spaces.
Yeah, 22, right, I need to redo my take on. So there is additional parking. Just don't bring your old Lincoln.
And caddies.
Exactly. Or come early. What else we got on notes?
We were talking about the compact spaces, right? Buildings three, four, five, and six, so I'll just delineate, so that's 170, space 170 through 174. Those are the exact spaces, correct?
170 through 174 and 190.
Okay, so the other thing was the, I don't know, one-way-ahead-or-no-outlet signage shall be placed along the internal drive at the northwest corner of building three to warn drivers that the drive ahead is one-way going in the opposite direction.
I mean, I think we should leave that up to traffic engineers, the actual placement of the signage. I don't know that the planning board really wants, do you agree? I mean-
Right, well, I mean, it's, we work from a far enough-
The intention, the intention is-
It's got to be far enough down where somebody can veer off between buildings, between Lahey and building three, so that they know that they can't go around Lahey.
It almost seems like, did they say north?
Yeah, he's got it.
Northwest?
Yeah, northwest.
So it's, oh, so it's the front corner.
Yeah, the front corner of building three.
Sounds about right.
So that way people know that there's no outlet.
Yeah.
But at the same time, you can drive up here to look for a spot, but, you know, you can't come up and around.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so there's, there's going to be issues with people turning around here and people turning around here.
Yes, we're trying to alert them here.
Yeah, but then nothing's going to-
Yeah, but also in building two, in between building two and Lahey, it's 530, there's no way to move.
But alert, I mean, there's no alert, people are just going to come in and go, oops, no parking, and be backing out there. That's going to be.
So you want additional, like a no-outlet sign there?
No, I mean, no-outlet sign would have no purpose.
Is that a retaining wall there between Lahey and building two? I think that's what the-
No. On the left side's a retaining wall.
Right.
Over here.
Yeah.
Here's, it's a guide rail, right here, the retaining wall.
Oh, so it's like a guard rail?
Well, yeah, there's a drop-off of the landscape there.
Oh, gotcha.
To see somebody coming in with a big car and finding all the spaces full and trying to get their way back out. But that's the way it is, as we're said. Nothing we can do about it.
And also this, and also let's-
Because then it'd be up to have another-
One of the things that we always have to be very mindful of is, is this, does this application have an impact, right? And I don't think there's an argument that this, that this application impacts that. This is different.
Right.
This was not filed, this one-way road, right?
Okay.
It was, you know, it was a, it was a two-way road, right? So I think there's reason to look at that and talk about this signage. I think there's less-
Right.
-to kind of start talking about what's happening here.
Right, the studies contemplated a two-way road.
Yeah, this was, yeah, this was already contemplated. All the study, Dave's point last time was that the engineering studies that were done in the EAF-
Were two-way.
-were then not redone when the road was changed to one-way.
Right.
Right? So I don't think there's really any really demonstrable impact for this application.
Well, the only thing we can do is, is suggest a, a sign like you were saying.
Yeah, I'm sure you want something that doesn't look too heavy, or you don't want that kind of, that big sign sticking up, because you don't, you don't have a retaining wall there. How do we want to leave that?
Oh, well, I don't think, I'm not suggesting anything for there. I was just observing.
Okay, all right, I understood. All right, anyone else? Okay, what else you got?
Do you guys still want a copy of the redacted lease with Putnam County?
Yeah, I mean, when it's executed. It's not executed yet, right?
We'll wait for this.
It's going to the physical, probably not.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah.
So you want that provided prior to, what, signing the amended site plans or issuance of the building permit? When do you want to see a copy of that redacted lease? When is it going to get approved? Next month?
Yeah, I'll go for next month.
When do you plan on filing your building permit?
A couple months.
Couple months?
Oh, so that works? Okay.
So you want it upon issue?
I think the village should have it. I mean, the village should have it to just make sure that they've actually, you know-
Right, so issuance, prior to issuance of the building permit?
Yep.
Prior to filing for the-
Issuance.
Issuance of the building permit.
I think issuance is fine, file, because then they can, they'll, you know, they'll gain two to three weeks doing plan review with Bill.
Right.
Right? And Bill will be ready to issue. If you make them wait until filing, it means any time to do a plan review.
Got you.
Right? All right.
Then there's some revisions to the drawings itself. I think this table that you put together should be incorporated, kind of slapped on in the corner there.
Yeah, the one thing, we need to figure out how to memorialize these code-required spaces for Lahey. That's kind of where we started with this, you know, with our whole, with our whole-
Yeah.
-dance around jurisdiction and kind of what, what exists and how it was done. If that were done better, right, and it were properly documented and were clear in the resolutions, it's not clear that it's not calculated, it's not true, it is calculated, right? I think there's, but I don't want to compound that by, by labeling 35 spaces for what would be-
So what we could do here is, and what I did in the, in the resolution I put together this afternoon where I talked about it, I just basically said that the planning board, the previous planning board determined that the 35 off-street parking spaces was a historical use of the medical office building, of the medical office use, sorry, at the Lahey Pavilion, and therefore would be sufficient for the continuation of the medical office use since the medical office use at Lahey Pavilion was to remain. So we could do, we could put like a little asterisk saying 35 spaces based upon historic use as determined by the prior planning board.
Okay, good. And I think that creates a clean paper trail that there are questions, because obviously the only thing that survives, and hopefully we're all here, is the document, right? So I mean-
So you're asking him to substitute this for this?
Yeah, and then John's going to come up with some notes, which I assume we're going to do this way?
Yeah, most of those notes are going to be the same, and then we'll add the new note about Leahy.
Right.
We've got an extra, now that we have an extra non-conforming spot, we've got to add that in.
Right.
What is no parking reduction waiver taken for NYPD spaces?
New York Presbyterian. Yeah, we can't, we can't have that note. We're gonna, because that note suggests that it was calculated under the zoning code and then a, and then a waiver was granted. We're allowed to grant a 20% waiver, so you wouldn't talk about granting a waiver on space wasn't calculated. So we'll deal with it with the, with the note that John just said, as far as the medical use being determined to be sufficient by the prior approving planning board. You know, so this, it's, I, you know, maybe what we ought to do in there too, just so everything's clean, is 11,500 square feet. That was very material, obviously. If you're going to increase the use, you have to provide the parking. The good news is, though, the way the code is written, if it's additional space, it would require parking anyway. But it probably should have the 11,500.
Yeah, for the medical use, for that size, yes.
Okay, great. And so that note will come out? Because it's confusing to talk about a waiver, something that can't have a waiver.
Well, you could still keep the note in, because it's accurate. I mean, you didn't take any, no parking, yeah, I mean, it's accurate. It just needs to be explained why, why it was done that way.
That's true. Together, they do make sense.
Right, so it's just really adding to that, adding to that.
That's a good point. Good, that's fine, yeah, because we, when we were going over this, some of the members were taking the deduction off the 35, you know, with the different numbers, you got to back the 35 out, take the waiver, add the 35 back in. That's how you come up with the 213.
Correct.
Otherwise, you're going to get down to like 16%.
Keep that sentence, we're just really clarifying it, we're not-
Maybe just have spaces plural, as opposed to space singular in the note.
Oh, the, you want tenant, New York Presbyterian tenant space?
Yeah, or something, just a slight, slightly-
You could put tenant.
Yeah.
Well, no, you don't want anything, you don't want anything on the site plan that says anything about New York Presbyterian, right? Why don't you just put "for medical use," "for medical tenant"? So change it to "for medical tenant, 11,500, medical tenant in building two."
Much better.
Nice, yeah. That way it survives all of us, and you're going to look at it and kind of go, oh, here's what they did.
It goes with the medical, not the building itself.
Okay.
That way, if he wants to move them back to the other building.
It just can move? Well, at least we'll be able to start to say, or to any other building.
It's tied to the medical use.
At this table, I broke it out. I think it, I think it should say, you know, what the use is, because it said land use, but yet it was speaking about tenants. So I think it should have, so I think it should say "public assembly," "the office retail." It should tie back to our code, not to tenancy. So, everyone want to get this just a quick, a quick once-over, because this obviously, you know, survives all of us, and it'd be-
Do I need to check your math?
No, the math, I think, is good. What I'm saying is that the way these were done before, if you look, it's just office, right?
Yeah.
As opposed to medical office, it's just a senior center, which, there's nothing in our code for senior center.
Right.
It's, it's a place of public assembly.
Yeah.
Slash county senior center.
And US Post Office is office retail.
Yeah. The use we're using, the element that falls under our code, is office retail. So-
I think that's very good.
Okay, good, excellent, great. We're agreed on that? Ezra? Okay, great. Wow.
Do we have a code specifically for senior housing, or is it multifamily housing?
Well, it's not senior housing, right? It's age restricted, but-
Yeah, but does our code specifically say the definition of senior housing?
Oh, good point, it says senior house, yeah, I don't know if this is-
I think we, I don't think our code says anything about senior. I think it has single-family, multifamily.
Right.
As far as the parking, I think this was specifically worked out for this project, that is one space per unit?
I think Judy's point is just to get the, to get the label right.
Just to be consistent, that's all.
Right, to get the label right.
But that's how they, did they label it above us?
Senior, no.
Yes. Their question is, is senior, I think their question is, is senior housing in the code? That's a question, right?
That was my question.
Yeah, senior citizen housing.
Nope, no, senior works.
And what does it say?
Well, it doesn't define it, but it talks about what's permitted in the, the special district, senior citizen housing.
I mean, that, that's what was anticipated.
Okay, good.
I don't know if they actually define it.
The age.
Yeah, senior citizen housing, age restricted housing facilities, which means special blah, blah, blah. So if you want to add in the citizen, senior citizen housing.
Good. No, I think it's clear. Just behind me, whatever, what does the board want?
Senior's fine.
Senior's fine, okay. What else we got?
I think there was a, to remove the reference to minor in the title.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't want to see this minor site plan here. This is, that's under the jurisdiction of the, of the building inspector. We don't process minor site adjustments on this, on the B4A, those are done by the building inspector. So it could just be proposed parking modification plan?
Well, would it be proposed?
No, well, no, actually, I'm sorry, you're right, proposed goes away. So it's-
It should be amended site parking modification plan, call it that, or amended site plan.
Amended site plan.
Okay, the next thing I had was the historic district review board. I think, we're not sure at this point, but you may want to add a condition or a reminder that, you know, once construction slash architectural drawings are submitted to the building inspector for any modifications or alterations to Leahy, that just make sure the building inspector reviews them to determine whether any review is required by the HDRB. We don't know at this point.
And that's consistent with the B4A, right? Minor site plan modifications are not exterior changes as far as materials and design standards, right? And all of those go back to HDRB, right?
Yeah, that should go back to HDRB, but you guys, you know, you don't have the details. He may, he probably doesn't have the details yet, so.
Well, we do have three details that do trigger it, right? Because we, the 224 plan from the county says they're going to cut exterior doors in, probably because of, went to egress, egress, not egress, because of public assembly. So they have one in the lounge and one in the multipurpose room to be able to probably push bar doors to go out. So there's going to be cuts, right? Cuts, yeah, so I will tell you, no, I'm not going to say, I'm going to say it should be easy, but I'm not going to, I mean, it's, you know, it's not-
It's not our business.
Yes, it's certainly not ours, but-
Right, but it may, I guess, when Bill looks at the details-
Certainly not a historic building, I mean, but they're going to, obviously, they're going to want something that looks appropriate, which is not, which is not a difficult task for that building.
They previously approved, they previously reviewed this, the original site plan approval, correct?
Right, yeah. And everything's done in the round, because, because the reality of it is, anything visible from a public right-of-way, the roads are all available to the public, right? So anything that's visible on the exterior of the building, the HDRB gets a look at. So, but it's not ours, but we should have a note in there
Just to remind-
That code enforcement takes the correct steps.
If, if it's necessary. It sounds, it sounds like it is, but we don't know.
Yeah, no, no, it's not ours to say we're not, it's correct, right? Got it?
So what do the notes say?
Okay, there, "Once detailed construction slash architectural drawings are submitted for any modifications or alterations to the Leahy Pavilion, the village building inspector must review them to determine whether any review is needed by the historic district review board."
Yeah, the only thing I'd add in John would be the exterior, because they could do-
Exterior, yes. And I would actually strike Leahy, because I don't think you should limit it to Leahy, because one change is, I don't know where or how, but at some point, a loading area went away from this building, right? I don't know what was shown to them, and I'm not going to go back and look, right? So I don't know how that's, how that's resolved, and it's not our purview. So I think it should just be any exterior changes, which are, that's the way it was always written anyway.
Yeah, it was exterior building changes, because I don't think that they looked at loading, at least I don't recall. The exterior of the building should be building changes.
Yeah, any exterior, any changes to the exterior of the building. I think we just, it shouldn't just be Leahy.
It's in the code anyway, it's just not there, it's in what's in the code.
Yeah, I guess you could say additional changes. I mean, additional related to the site plan, you know, to this amendment, right? I mean, it's really just the amendment.
They could make some additional exterior changes between now and two months.
Yeah, but this much square footage, you're going to have changes, you know? But I'm sure they're going to limit the exterior, so they don't have to go back to talk about, you know, finishes and standards. But that's up to them, so.
That's, I mean, there's-
On to secret?
Yeah, then there's the standard condition about paying the escrow consultants.
Yes, thank you for bringing the escrow current, and obviously, did you, well, the last bill was paid, and they brought it current. So y'all do, how soon can we get your final done? No pressure?
Well, certainly by July 1st or 2nd, but I'll try to work on it next week.
Okay. Well, you want to do this part too, so, yeah, so whenever you're done with this, obviously, you don't do it before you do this.
Next week is what?
All right, okay, great. Yeah, no, that's always, that has to be in there in our code anyway.
So, I mean, that's all I had as far as conditions.
Anybody else? Last bite of the apple. Nope, I think we're good. I think the board did a nice job.
There's just a typo. Sorry, I'm a teacher.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You've got two, two-ten's.
Yeah, you've got a 208 that's supposed to be a 210.
That's all.
You have the only one that I have. I was going to say-
You gotta go through the whole process. Steve's happy back.
So procedurally, we received the county recommendation under-
The 239.
GML 239M.
You need a copy of it, yeah.
I have a copy of it. It's basically a matter of local concern. That means that you don't need to do any supermajority. They didn't even have any recommendations. They just said, you know, whatever, it's approved. As far as they're concerned, they have no issues with it. It's a matter of local concern. So now that you have that, you have the jurisdiction to take action. So the second procedural step is secret. Now, this is a type-one action, because it's adjacent to a national historic district?
It's in the local.
Well, it's in the local.
It's in the local, adjacent to national.
But it's adjacent, I think some of the properties up on the building are right there, are in the national. Now, there's no other involved agencies, because they don't, at this point, they don't require any other approvals.
Yeah, I think since we don't know what's happening, we don't have detailed construction plans, so I think even though the county gives 224 drawing that talks about cutting doors in, I don't, those aren't final plans. First of all, they're done with magic markers, and something's got to eventually have an architect do those. Those, so I don't think that's part of our action, would you agree? So we need to make sure it's not involved in this action.
No.
Good, good, good.
At this time, it's all kind of speculation at this point. So, so it is a type-one action. Normally, you'd have to coordinate, but there's no other involved agency, so there's no need to do coordinated review. They already submitted a full environmental assessment form, which is another requirement for a type-one. They submitted that back in February. So you're free to take secret action tonight. Obviously, you have to do it before you make any final decision. And I prepared a neg deck, and I apologize that I just emailed it a couple hours ago.
Which was a week in advance, John.
I know, I'm sorry. You're never going to let me live that down?
I will.
So here are copies.
Are these are copies? I was going to pull it up.
Nope, I have extra copies. I did bring extra copies tonight. I mean, the neg deck is pretty simple.
No.
All they're really stating is, this proposed action doesn't require the preparation of an environmental impact statement.
This is all the boilerplate.
Yeah, no involved agencies, yeah, that's good. This looks good to me.
It's really the page one. Page two is the boilerplate, where you just go through the regs and-
And you'll fill in the resolved lengths?
That's probably part of the draft resolution that I put together.
Oh, okay.
I'm not there yet.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Jumping ahead.
So I mean, if you want to go through the draft resolution, I just, I can kind of walk you through it without, you know, like, do you want to take time to read it first? I mean, there are a lot of warehouse clauses, but only because I just go through the history.
Right.
I like to read it.
Yeah, take the time and read it first.
Is that first line correct? This is what we're calling it?
What's that?
Before, you know, is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I don't know if that means the prior warehouse or the future warehouse.
The-
This 11.2.
11.2.
No, 11.2.
Should that be the approving planning board?
Or the prior planning board?
Prior planning.
I'd take it as prior.
The warehouse clause is just kind of go through the history and then kind of set the stage. Yeah, that can be put. Procedure, yeah.
You put everything else in the chronological.
Yep.
It's wonderful having a teacher on the phone. So, should we add that one space there?
The compact?
The sign.
Yeah, I have the notes. Yeah, I have the notes.
You have that, okay.
Yeah, number 190, yes. I'm actually gonna put in the, I'll actually put in the space numbers.
Oh, good, thank you. I was gonna ask, but then I checked.
Someone else, so, item one, building number two, it's not the second floor, it's the first floor. The ground floor is the basement, and the back of it's the first. And you have the notes as far as the, what we talked on, all the others?
Between the cities.
And C2, you changed to the amended site plan?
Yes.
That's good to me. Yep. Good to you? Good?
I think it was very good.
Yeah, it's nice.
I had a chance to see it about an hour before the meeting. Shout outside, I'll throw it out there.
Excellent, yeah, nice work, John.
It's nice to have a floor.
Let's have the machine go as good.
PTSD from that one meeting, where we were like 90 degrees, I thought I was gonna explode.
Well, I was gardening before I got here, so I was gardening, so...
It's beautiful.
Other than it, it's so dry.
I remember the socrates over in Hamlet Dan, because it's just, it's dust.
I can't get hoses to all my gardens.
Yeah, you have a, you have a sleek, it's a beautiful garden, yeah.
It's all dry.
I'd love to see it in the action picture, though. Once it starts raining.
So we all agree it's 213, right, is the final number of conforming spaces?
213, are we all in agreement?
I thought it was 214.
No, 190 is not.
Oh, I thought you were right.
So...
And it's the required, 213 required, with a 20%.
And now you're maxing out on the waiver 20%.
Yeah.
That's it.
Emo's little.
Okay. Those were the only two blanks I had to fill in, because I wasn't sure what to do.
20 and 20, yeah, 213, 20, 20.
22 non-conforming spaces.
Right, and we'll add, we'll change the, we'll change this and the notes.
Right.
To reflect the changes that we talked about. Do you guys have any other questions or concerns, or, I mean, if you're ready to act, you can handle the secret first, and then you can do the actual approval resolution itself. And then it's gonna be subject to the changes that we talked about.
Should I secret start roll call vote?
Yeah, I would do the roll call.
Need a motion to approve the negative deck for the Butterfield real development? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, or by roll call? I'm sorry, member Sari?
Aye.
Member Rose?
Aye.
Member Clemson?
Aye.
An aye vote, aye. Member Marion is absent.
Okay, and then, now that you've completed secret, you're ready, you're free to act on the underlying application itself.
Okay. Given all the amendments that we made, the changes that we're making, that John will work, will clean up the paperwork, I think we're gonna go ahead and vote tonight on putting this forward. Roll call vote. Member Rose?
Aye.
Member Sari?
Aye.
Member Clemson?
Aye.
Member Francisco, myself, votes aye.
The motion was presented by Chairman Francisco, and then seconded by...
No, I'm sorry, the motion was presented by Arn, and seconded by Ezra.
All right. That's it?
That's it?
Okay.
So, I mean, does anybody wanna make a statement? I mean, I, nope. So, and basically, I think what, what happened here, just so people are clear, because it's not clear at all, it's about as clear as mud for most people, is that, you know, we started out, there was a, there was clearly a difference of opinion about the planning board's jurisdiction. So what, what happened was then, you know, many months of discussion about what our jurisdiction was, not how many parking spaces. The first parking table we actually got, you can ask any of the folks that we processed as a board, the first thing we asked them to come in with is a site plan and a parking table. Where our architect says, how do I, how do I expedite this? Come in with a parking table. Barbara and Bruce says, how do we make this go fast? Use the attorney, come in with a parking table, right? So the first parking table that we got was on May 20th because of that disagreement with code. I would very much like to thank the mayor and the village board for supporting this board. It's, it's a very difficult job all the way around. It's difficult for boards, it's difficult for independent standing boards, like the planning board, that are supposed to be, you know, outside the sphere of influence and just applying code. We're not here, you know, we certainly want to get people to yes, but our job is to apply the code. So we're, we're very much bound by that, and we have no other authority, right? So if, if we understand something to be a change of use, and advised by council, that it's a change of use, the first thing we do is a site plan with amended parking table. Just so we're all clear, we got the first parking table on 520. We had comments to that on 526. We did not get any response back on that, so it was just really done in three meetings. Which is pretty much what we've been doing, which we've been trying to do. When you talk to the four or five applicants so forth that we, that we've processed, is really kinda focus on, especially business owners. I mean, the administration, as well as this board, is very sensitive to the fact when folks are paying rent, or when folks are before the board. It's different to not be able to start your kitchen renovation than it is to, than it is to, you know, to really, to start building, especially when you're paying rent. We had applicants that were kind of languishing in the board when we took over, that we pushed through within a couple of meetings, that are able to build, and hopefully, will all be open for the summer season here. So that's really what happened, and I know it's very confusing, and certainly, when, when, when there is the threat of litigation, the last thing you can do is really talk to people about what's going on. So obviously, we're not here to kind of, you know, for the last few months, to really tell you what's going on, because we're not at liberty to do that. We really, our job is really to protect the villagers' interests and to not take on additional risk. And so, we knew the task was clear. I think the board did a great job in kind of, you know, holding up under the pressure. And again, I'd like to commend the mayor and the village board for supporting the planning board, being willing to go out and get a second opinion just to make sure we're doing it right. Because what we wanna do is make sure that every decision that we make is clear, it's consistent, and it's defensible. So the next person that comes in says, change of use, okay, parking table, site plan, what happens? Same thing, change of use, parking table, site plan, right? And we're, you know, we're trying very hard to move these things through quickly. So, you know, again, I think that, you know, the public, the, you know, and everybody else, kind of like wading through this process, that it is very difficult to understand, especially if you don't know land use. It just looks like a bunch of people kind of, you know, sitting around talking. But I think that, I think that the board did an excellent job holding up, and then, you know, we got done in the last three meetings, because everybody's willingness to jump on this stuff, we just got this plan this morning, and kind of say where, you know, where we are. So I just wanna thank everybody, as well as the, thank you, John, for sticking with us, because obviously, it gets a little, it's a little hairy. And I think everybody kind of did a good job in keeping cool head, so... Anybody else?
Nine motion to approve the name?
Yeah, I don't think we have...
Anything else on the agenda?
We should, thank you. We should, and congratulations, obviously, it's a, it's a big day for...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, um... We do, should, I don't even have a copy of it anymore, although I might, actually, but our applications are here. So you...
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, thank you. And so you had some comments on the application?
I did.
Do you have them with you?
I took them out of my folder.
Let's forget about it. All right. Motion to adjourn?
I'm moved for adjournment.
Second.
We are adjourned. Again, thank you guys very much.
So this is the change of use.
Good job, man.
That's the language, change of use. That's my double, one double check.
A site plan amendment.